So first, we have Laura Gania.
Come on, someone.
Look at your faces.
You don't even want us to take care of you.
One on one.
If we could be extended, why? Wow.
We need to be quiet.
We'll have three minutes and fifteen minutes at the beginning and fifteen minutes at the end.
I'll make a motion to extend it by fifteen minutes so we can get all ten.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you.
All opposed, I mean, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same? Alright, yes.
Thanks, Laura Gania. Just go all for it.
Yeah, I think we're too many votes. We have eight more to one section. Alright, thank you.
Yeah, that's true.
My name is Laura Gania. I come to you today to express my concern as a potential direction changes to our curriculum and education that our students receive. This concern stems from a message community that was put off by the school board last year. Along with this message community was a list of resources put forth by the districts for parents to read to help the district promote its message community. The list of resources contains many inappropriate messages that cannot promote a message community, rather just the opposite. Some of the resources focused on white privilege, white supremacy, how white Americans should, like quote, model anti-racism, which is something a lot of white Americans really struggle to do. Also listed were references to the sixteen nineteen project, which happens to be endorsed by our teachers union here in town. This project puts slavery into consequence at the center of America's historical narrative, undermines the lives and sacrifices of our great wartime heroes who died and lost their lives for our country. In fact, this project is a tool of political indoctrination. No school system should endorse it, no teachers should use it. So the question becomes, what type of education do you want for our students? This is why we are here. We are here to let you and the NEA know that we have a voice. We are here to let you know, and the NEA know, that item thirty-nine does not want it. As you probably are aware, the NEA, the teachers union, adopted this as item thirty-nine that provides that the NEA, as a team of staff members, who want to learn more about white activism and anti-CRT rhetoric, will provide an already created in-depth study that critiques white supremacy, anti-blackness, and other forms of power and oppression, and opposes attempts to ban, including critical race theory and all the sixteen nineteen, nineteen project, and will be joining the Black Lives Matters rally this year. I strongly suggest that you take a look at what our teachers union is promoting. This is not what we want. We want critical thinkers who use facts as the basis of forming opinions. We want the history of our great country to be taught with a fair and balanced approach, recognizing the context of the times, what events occurred, recognizing those who fought to secure our freedoms, freedoms and liberties, making this country the greatest on earth. We do not tolerate racism or any message promoting or undermining any race or ethnicity. We do not want some liberal undertones that promote disrespect for our country and our institutions. We want our children to understand that America, even with its flaws, is the greatest country on earth. It is exceptional. Our current school board chair, Tina Harrison, wrote to me in response to my question of including American exceptionalism in our curriculum, and I quote, "My personal knowledge and experience of American exceptionalism is limited." Really? You are living and enjoying the greatest liberties and freedoms here on earth. What, your knowledge is limited? We should be showing this one better. We want you to take every possible action.
Laura, can I take your written comments? I'll accept those in. But we're out of time.
Okay. We want you to make sure that our children, the next general, the generation, receive and deserve a solid education, not based on racism, but on diverse ideology, rather than shying from the principles of freedom and liberty and representative culture.
Let her finish.
Representing, phone your next.
I'm with Ed Wollstein to present to board of these, not all my concerns, and just to be as clear as has happened. I, in the message community, I submitted a writing request to the board that focuses on updating our history curriculum, ensuring our policies and procedures provide everyone with safe learning environment, adjusting our practices and passing to new staff to better serve the diverse group of students we educate, demonstrating equal opportunities, engage in dialogue from an interim environment, and celebrate diversity, promote inclusivity. So basically, I have a two-page writing request that pursuant to RSA ninety-one A. You have five days to which to respond. Laura, you can give me a reason why, but I am asking, as the documents become available, that you produce those to me so I don't have to wait months to get them.
Thank you.
And I also have, and turn it on.
Thank you. You go, Laura.
Thank you. State rep Ralph Cohen, six fifty-five, has been a state rep for thirteen years, eleven on that education committee, also past school board member in two thousand four, two thousand ten. New law this year. Pro- ninety-one ninety-three forty prohibits, prohibition on teaching discrimination. Starts with, no pupil in any public school in this state shall be taught, instructed, incognito, or compelled to express belief in and support for any one of the following. Item B, that an individual by virtue of his or her sex, age, gender identity, sexual orientation, race, creed, color, marital status, familial status, mental or physical disabilities, religion, or national argument, argument is inherently racist, sexist, or oppressive, whether consciously or sub-unconsciously. It has been mentioned that is not being taught in our school, but this reference, that the reference is of the teachers if a student asks a question. If only side of this issue is being given, that would be against the law. What about putting up the other sides? Now, this is just Marxist ideology, and that is the truth. The letter of unity is really a letter of division pushing Marxism. Wonder what would happen to the teacher if a student asked about CRT, and the teacher answered the truth about the thing, the Marxist ideology of division. Also, current law and a school policy allows a parent to request in writing to their principal stating any material that they believe is objectionable, and that child not be taught this, and the school will put the, will give other stuff of teaching to be taught. That is school policy I J L, part two, A five. Also, another new law, RSA one ninety-four F colon one, education freedom account. This bill allows poor and middle income parents to attend and approve D O E private school or homeschool. The state advocacy aid will follow the student. And by the way, this town includes sectarian schools. And I hear that St. Francis is adding on. Wonder how many parents will do this? Wonder how many parents will pull their children out of public school because of this ideology? Remember, state funding is based on the number of students. And I would suggest that if one member wants to follow the law, make a motion to instruct the superintendent to comply with the current law, remove the divisional material, and fix the curriculum before the start of school year or submit his resignation. Thank you.
What can you submit a request for whatever objectional material we have found within our curriculum in our district, and we will make sure that.
The point is, is do all the parents know what the curriculum is?
Yes.
And is there any curriculum that says about CRT?
We're not here to be integrated.
The point is.
With your ideology.
Does that law affect the age of that one?
Say it a lot now.
And we will. When you're affecting it. Has the D O E issued technical advice?
Not sure, probably not, not yet.
So once we receive that technical advisory, we will comply with the law.
Also, do another law, advocacy, education also been changed.
Yes, we are welcome, thank you. I have Mr. Representative LaSalle.
Let the record show, I'm Richard LaSalle, two thirty-six Charles Bank Road, High Lake, near Lynchfield. Currently serves as a state rep and as a selectman in town. I was on the school board for three terms, and I have been a substitute teacher since I retired at Campbell High School. I'm just here, I'm not going to repeat what everyone says. I'm just incredibly disappointed and alarmed at the hyper-partisan atmosphere that I see in the schools. That's, and the, the idea that conservative staff members and teachers are afraid to voice their opinion when, when to be shunned by other staff members. And I, I see that there seems to be, the, the attitude of the administration seems to be to encourage more liberal types of thought. I'll give you an example of that. This past year, I sat in on the staff development that took place at the beginning of the school year. A member of the administration stood in front of all the teachers and berated the sitting president of the United States and said how important it was for teachers to vote. Okay? I, I, other instances, I personally sat in on a staff development that took place in the fall of two thousand nineteen. The lady who was in front of all the teachers was giving a staff development thing, and I came away with three things. First, it was an incredible waste of time. Second, they, she spent the entire time knocking maels, particularly white maels. And third, she had a problem with Teddy Roosevelt and said that he was a racist because of what he did in the Spanish-American War. I'm, I'm just, I'm just totally disappointed in, in what's happening. When this, when I was made aware of this message of unity, I was immediately thought about this lady, and I said, oh, now it makes sense. Now it makes sense. So with respect to your meeting that comes, that you're talking about at the end of the month, whether we participate in that, we need to have things on record. We need to have it as a matter of record. Too many things that have taken place are not a matter of record and are, are discouraged. So again, I, I, I don't have time.
It's concerning to me that you experienced that. I've not been aware of it.
Allegedly, and I'm just going to say.
Unbelievable you said that.
Doesn't matter.
We'll take him out.
So why do they feel so afraid to do something like this under your leadership? That you set the tone for this school.
That's right.
Why does these people feel so free to pay?
Representative LaSalle?
And disparage your teachers that don't agree with your.
I just need the.
Comma, my, just a little.
Scott LaSalle, quiet, please.
Thank you, members of the board, for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Mark McLean, state representative for Southern Manchester and the town of Lynchfield, and vice chair of the House Judiciary Committee. I'm here today to speak about the anti-discriminatory components of the new A D two law and how they relate to the anti-racism initiatives undertaken by this district. In the last year, following such acts as the death of George Floyd, we've all seen a huge amount of discussion about race in America. And while this is a good thing, we see some things come out of such as many advocates pushing critical race theory and other divisive concepts, and having that come to the fore. Now, as you guys all know, critical race theory has been built in for decades, emerging from the nation's law schools, where theorists such as Cheryl Harris have put forth the idea that racism is an intrinsic property, especially of white people. In her paper, Critical Characteristics of Whiteness as Property, published in the Harvard Law Review, she calls for the suspension of property rights, the seizure of land and wealth, and its redistribution along racial lines. So that mode of thought makes a sharp departure from the concept of equality inspired by Frederick Douglass and Martin Luther King Jr., towards the concept of equity championed by Marx and Lenin. So the idea of the cockpacy and even the Declaration of Independence are therefore considered racist. So if the concepts have just remained an academic curiosity in the nation's law schools, they might not raise as much alarm as you're seeing here. But there's been a push to incorporate these concepts into our schools, and that any other than that, early this month, the NEA approved resolutions and funding, increasing the implementation of CRT in curriculum, promoting CRT in local districts, and attacking opponents of CRT, including parents groups. So it's for these reasons that the legislature felt compelled to include a ban on this teaching and teaching of divisive concepts in A D two. So this district, last year, compiled a list of resources for white people and parents to deepen anti-racism work. Among the resources listed, because I can't go through all of them, was Robin DiAngelo's White Fragility. This book argues that whites must face the racist lies that they all carry as people and, and, and.
Terrible.
As part of racist society. The work, I think, is condescending to both whites and people of color, and its inclusion in the district's resource list is completely inappropriate, and it's also out of step with the new state law. Because this initiative has been able to permeate throughout the district for a year, it's my opinion that the board should move rapidly to implement a plan to come into compliance with the new law and counter any damage that was done by the existing anti-racism policy. And as we've heard, you have to be absolutely transparent with the public with respect to that implementation. Thank you very much.
Senator Barry?
Good evening. I'm Ross Barry, I represent South Manchester with Mark along with the town of Lynchfield. I'm not going to take up too much of your time tonight because I want you to be here for your constituents, because they're here, and they're in the hallway, and they're not happy. My wife and I are trying to move to Lynchfield right now, how surprised they are what they are. When she saw, my wife saw this letter from you guys, she was appalled. Why would we move to a town that thinks like this? It said, they don't think like that. There's something in that letter that's attached to it that is deeply disturbing. Everybody's going to come tonight and talk about the CRT and the racial stuff, and that's fine, but there's something in there that is disturbing that hasn't been said yet, which is there's calls in there to encourage students to defund the police, the same people that show up when you need them. There was a, they don't really describe it, they called it a peaceful protest, I called it a riot on South Willow Street, where I also represent. And the police were the ones who came there to keep order in my district, the same district that represents Lynchfield. Please, please do not ignore your constituents. I listen to them, you should listen to them, they're here, they deserve to be heard. I think you made a motion to allow for Von Der Hulpe to comment. My recommendation is you let every single person who wants to talk, talk. It's going to be brutal, you're going to sit there, but you should do it. Your job is to listen. My job is to listen and conquer, and your job is to listen here.
My name is Harry Orright, I live at eight Rocky Hill Road in Lynchfield. I'm going to send a hard copy of my June fifteen, two thousand twenty-one correspondence into the record in this meeting. Electronic copies are in the town's email system as it, and all related correspondence were addressed to the school board, the district superintendent, and the executive system. From this correspondence, my primary question remains unanswered. Where is the matter of the quote, message of unity, unquote, dated three tenth, two thousand twenty, documented as having been motioned into discussion, reviewed, drafted, finalized, voted, and approved for publication? The message of unity was signed by the superintendent on behalf of the school board, the school administrators, and the district directors. It was published on the school district's website and may have been sent directly to various constituencies such as faculty, staff, and administrators. Subjects in the message of unity include a quote, pledge to be better through actions such as updating our history curriculum and the content we teach, adjusting our practices as faculty and staff, end quote. Also included were pledged topics regarding hiring policies. Finally, an addendum titled List of Resources for Staff, Parents, and Students was included. It contained a document with no less than ninety-six separate web links, many of which themselves exploded and can get more late information, labeled Anti-Racism Resources for White People, which referenced scores of books, articles, podcasts, movies, YouTube videos, television shows, a spectrum of social media, articles, materials for educators, academic papers, the list goes on. Much of this was for sale, and much also included solicitation for donations. This was all offered under the rubric of quote, ways to learn on your own this summer. Matters of curriculum, teaching practice, policy, and publications endorsed by students and faculties of reading fall squarely within the confines of oversight and review and approval of the school board and our public business. New Hampshire Code Title Six, Chapter nine one dash eight, provides no allowance for such matters to be held in unrecorded private meetings, executive session, or to be informally or otherwise administered. If there was an official meeting regarding this matter, there should be public documentation. Where is it? Examining the list of resources document, anti-racism resources for white people, which came under a directive with the immoderate of the district superintendent, the school board, the district administration, and principals of the district, one finds two undeniable consistencies. The fundamental thrust of these resources is a compendium of critical race theory publications by an all-star list of critical race theory authors, theorists, editorialists, proponents, and proprietors. And secondly, it is unilateral in its perspective. The list of resources is the ref of any countervailing positions, much less any Socratic scrutiny. Perhaps it simply mirrors the mindset of the two political activists from New York City, Florence creators. From all evidence, the message of unity and the list of resources were apparently approved in maybe two weeks. It's strange for me to believe that such a vast collection of publications could have been vetted for endorsement within that timeframe. Is there a record of such a review, where the many, many web links were localized to ensure consistency over time? Is there a record of any deliberation on this matter? Not, why not?
I want everyone watching this video to look at Christina Harrison's expressions. She's just so rude.
You are violating civil rights.
Mr. President? There are a lot of alleged.
That's not alleged, what is recorded?
It's not alleged.
Thank you, I'm not going to respond at this time. I haven't given many options to answer your questions.
Well, once again, the Democrats in this great nation, and on the school board and the superintendent, think about their laws. Apparently you, Mr. Jettie, and Tina, go to any lengths to ignore the governor and the new law. I have sat back on a lot of decisions by the school board, the superintendent, and our district. Most recent was when I was taken off the sub-list due to holding a sign that did not agree with the special vote on the teachers' contract. My lawyer was ready to go to federal court due to violations of my civil rights. In the high school, at least two months are taken from the Civil War. I'm guessing that all the white soldiers, whether from the north or south, come under the classification of being racist. Well, this middle-class woman who is a racist, according to the materials that were posted on the school reading list. Mr. Jettie took off all correspondence relating to the CRT on the Google sites. If you truly believe in the CRT, not only am I a racist, but you and all the school board are. I say you violated First Amendment when it comes to freedom of speech and freedom of the press. I'm asking for your resignation effective immediately. And to the school board, I will make sure that when it comes to reelection, that you will have worthy candidates running against you.
Senator Sullivan?
Yeah, so we're going to get the S A U sixteen superintendent to resign too. This is going to happen all over the nation.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Sullivan, can I?
They do need to stop him.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you for what we do on the board. So now for something completely different. I support the message of unity. I can't speak to each individual language, it is quite, it's quite a bit there, I can't say, I'm sorry. But my, I think that we do best when we take a full, a fuller view of history and that we allow for discussion on both sides, that that allows us to come to a better place as a country. I do believe that anti-racism is appropriate to be in schools and to be taught, and that there is a lot of work to do. And I think it's a good place to start.
Good evening. I am speaking here tonight, both as a veteran teacher in the district and as president of the Lynchfield Education Association. On behalf of my colleagues, and by this I mean including teachers, peer educators, administrators, school board members, et cetera, I hereby make the following statement regarding to critical race theory as it pertains to education in the Lynchfield School District. Critical race theory is not being taught in the Lynchfield School District, nor, to the best of my knowledge, has it ever been taught in our schools. Furthermore, in my fifteen years of teaching in this town, I have never heard a single teacher, administrator, school board member, et cetera, ever speak in support of CRT being taught in our schools. In fact, I've never heard anyone in the district, including students and parents as well as Lynchfield staff, ever mention the term until recently when the issue blew up on the Lynchfield WhatsApp site. Additionally, the Lynchfield Education Associate, additionally, the Lynchfield Education Association has never advocated for CRT to be taught in our schools, nor has it ever asked for P D on CRT. Despite the hell of a move surrounding CRT, Lynchfield teachers and staff are focused on what we've always been focused upon, delivering high-quality instruction to our students, supporting and advocating for our students as they develop from children into young adults, and promoting the idea of lifelong learning so that our students will continue to develop as individuals and knowledgeable and conscientious members of our community. I am disappointed that I have to stand here tonight to defend my colleagues, particularly in the wake of an extremely demanding school year in which Lynchfield teachers and staff had to face a myriad of unprecedented challenges in light of the unanticipated issues presented to us as a result of COVID nineteen, such as socially-distanced classrooms, mask mandates, additional health and cleaning protocols, and the implementation of a blanket synchronous model of instruction where teachers were required to teach simultaneously to in-class and at-home virtual students. In conclusion, critical race theory isn't an issue in the district. It doesn't exist as part of any curriculum from K through twelve, at least not to the best of my knowledge. Nor has it ever been advocated by a teacher, administrator, or school, school board member of the Lynchfield School District. Lynchfield teachers and support staff will continue to focus our attention on delivering a top-notch creative instruction while supporting and advocating for our beloved students. Thank you.
What I'm going to talk about's already been addressed.
By Fiat.
A lot of bias on the.
That's the end of my list. Is anyone else interested in speaking? I can take one more.
Yeah, when I went to school.
No, we're sorry, we already have your.
When I went to school and a teacher stood in front of me.
Is anyone else out here that wants to speak?
That was teaching.
What's that?
Can I relinquish my time?
No, he's already spoken, and I don't know why he's still talking. Is there anyone else out? Is there anyone else out here that wants to speak? Mine?
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't just walk away. Can you answer my question? If it was my time, why--
I'm sorry. Quiet, please. You're the speaker.
It was my time.
I asked if you wanted to speak. I thought--
And I relinquished my time to the gentleman.
I've been a resident-- oh, gosh, I think since nineteen ninety. I asked my daughter, you think they're teaching critical race theory in Campbell High School? No? They talk about white privilege? Oh, yeah. They are teaching CRT. So you can't be with people twenty-four seven. It is somehow hidden there. And alls I have to say is our country is more divided than it's ever been. You are either stirring the pot and creating more problems, or you're promoting peace and unity and focusing on what we don't have in common, not focusing on economics, color, race, any of that stuff. That's not gonna hold us together, and that's not how I teach my kids. So obviously, I'm against anything that teaches someone that because of their skin, they're more the victim, or because of their skin color, they're more privileged. It's just, it's not appropriate in school. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you for moving the--
Thanks for letting him speak in my spot. Appreciate it. Why can't you let him speak?
If anybody didn't submit their written, would you mind emailing me with it so that I can get it into the record properly? Thank you.